I'd like to call to order the March 1st, 2021, meeting of the Algoma Common Council. I'd like our clerk to take the roll, please.
Merron?
Here.
Dashlet?
Here.
Here.
Gressel?
Here.
Weez?
Here.
Meverden?
Here.
Pabick?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of agenda? Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Are there any changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Mitch. Second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes from February 1st, 2021. Does everybody had a chance to look at them? Any questions? Or additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment? Is there anybody either on Zoom or here this evening that would like to speak under public comment? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to consideration of general bills and credit card payments. Did everybody have a chance to look at those bills? Any questions of any of the bills? Or credit card payments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Kevin.
Second.
Second by Casey. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Weez?
Yes.
Gressel?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Merron?
Yes.
Thank you. Conference attendance, we have a couple on the agenda tonight. One is for our clerk, Erin Miller, to attend the virtual learning from 7:12 to 7:16. We also have Matt Murphy to attend the storm conference on 10/21 of September 12th to September 15th. And also Matt Murphy to attend the WWOA 55th Annual Conference in La Crosse on October 5th through October 8th.
So moved.
Moved by Scott. Bless you, John.
Second.
Second by John.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion's carried. There are no additional claims against the city at this time, Jared?
No.
Oh, lucky us. Okay, committee reports. We've had a change in how we do committee reports. If any of you had the opportunity to watch it, they pre-taped the managers on the last Thursday of the month. Just happened to be the last Thursday of the month last month. And it's aired on the cable channel. And I just want to say, I thought everybody's doing an excellent job. I've been watching it, and I think it's very informative. At this time, everybody should have had a copy of the minutes in their packet or online. Does anybody have any questions of any of the minutes that were in your packet? Otherwise, we're not going to read them.
I, Mr. Mayor, I just have, I just have to make a correction in the ones that I submitted for PPP.
Okay.
Under the police report, the bullet point number three, I had a couple of the years off. The increase in the, let me just go back to the minutes here so I can tell you exactly what those were. Let's see. So it was to do with the, well, now where did it go? Okay, so there was, I'm talking about the increase in property crime. What I had listed in the minutes was there was a slight increase in 2019, but it should have been in 2020, but still well below 2019. So I had, I'm off a year on those. And then also I had noticed that the new operators licenses that were approved or went through, as noted in the committee, were not listed in the minutes that were drafted and published for the meeting, although I know that those were in the minutes that I had sent through. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to bring out. I will resend the amended minutes with those couple dates updated, but then just wanted to point out that the transfer of the minutes into this format, that the new operators licenses that were named there were missing.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Appreciate that. John? Did you have a question?
I also have a correction on the medical board minutes, not in the body of the minutes, but in the heading of the minutes. It is, I have February 24th. It should read February 25th.
Okay, Erin, did you? Just bear with us a minute. Erin's going to, she's making these corrections on her sets of minutes, so. Does anybody else have any corrections or additions or questions? Jared?
So similar to the previous comments that were made, I just wanted to comment about the Finance and Personnel Committee minutes that I drafted. I was looking back at them, and I felt like on one particular subject, namely the public safety facility, not that anything's inaccurate, but I could have worded some things better. There's a little bit of confusion. I can totally see why, looking back at them, how I worded certain things as far as what was said. So I will be changing, I will be amending the minutes so that when it's before the Finance and Personnel Committee in a couple of weeks, you'll see a slight change to that section. It's just going to better reflect who actually said what and making it more clear what was said. Because like I said, again, looking back at it, it was, you know, it was a very lengthy discussion. And I, looking back, I felt like I probably over summarized it, and so I want to clarify them a little bit. So I'll be changing those.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any other chairmen have any changes or anything? Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll go through and we'll basically just accept the motion to approve the receipt of the committee reports as amended and changed. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is no old business for tonight. Under new business, item A, appointment of Clayton Pearl to the Algoma Fire and Rescue Department. I'll accept the motion to approve his appointment. Excuse me.
Second.
Who made that?
Kevin.
Kevin made the motion. Who seconded, please?
John. John.
Motion made seconded to approve Clayton Pearl as a probationary member of the Algoma Fire Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, resolution number 1061-2021. Erin?
Do you want me to call roll?
No, just give us an overview of what that is, please.
Renewing the agreement with Weez Memorials for Cemetery Services.
Okay, I'll accept a motion, and we'll open it for discussion if there's any. Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Second by Lee. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. It is a renewing an agreement, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Gressel?
Yes.
Weez?
Epstein.
Meverden?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Merron?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 1062-2021. Erin?
Amending the cemetery fee schedule.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jake. Any questions or comments on that schedule? This has to do with the new agreement with Weez, so we had a, we adjusted the fee schedule. Again, because this involves one of our alderperson, I will do a roll call vote.
Weez?
Epstein.
Gressel?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Merron?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
And the last resolution is 1063-2021. Erin?
Awarding bids and awarding a contract for the 2021 utility and street reconstruction project.
Okay. Entertain a motion. Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Casey. Questions or comments? I mean, I have Matt, if anybody needs any clarification. Everybody knows this is the Six Street Project. You should have seen in your minutes the amounts of the bids. Matt, I have one question. On the recycling, the recycling material that they alluded to? Where one, is that, is there one way better than the other, or?
And that's a great question. And the way Robert E. Lee laid it out, why there's two different bidders, because in the primary bid, there was actually a different person, that was a different company that was a low bidder. But because we're using alternate, inside the spec for that 12 inches of base course before blacktop, they still have to meet a DOT spec. So whether they bring in all raw aggregate material from outside the city, or they take all the concrete to blacktop and they mill it out, they still have to meet that spec. So it still gets sent to the state lab, and the spec still has to be met. If there's money to be saved, I'm all for it. I think that's the direction to go. And more or less what it is, so they'll take all the sidewalk, all the concrete curb, and all the blacktop off of this job. They'll bring it to a site like they did two years ago down by the wastewater facility. They'll bring in a portable crusher, they'll crush it on site, bring the material right back on the road.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I call for a roll call vote?
Do we have a start date?
And this is going to Peters?
This has been awarded to Peters Concrete, that is correct. Which ultimately, if you add that alternate in, that we use the crushed material from the job site, not bringing in fresh aggregate, makes them the low bidder.
Do we have a start date, Matt?
They will start, they can start earlier than school being out for the end of the year, but they have to start on the far west end, or I'm sorry, on the far south end of the project, which would be on 54 or Jefferson, and work their way back to the north, back towards school.
Have you, have you and the chief talked about street closures and routings and all of that?
We have not talked about that. None of that will take place until we have a pre-con meeting. In that pre-con meeting is where all of that, we'll sit down with the school district, chief of police. Anybody that wants to be involved that's on Sixth Street is welcome to come to that pre-conference meeting, and that's where we'll get into the brass tacks of how this is going to start, when it's going to start, when it's going to finish, everything like that.
So could potentially affect buses and that sort of thing as well, or are you anticipating that problem?
We are anticipating that problem. That's why we're, if the contractor wants to start prior to the end of the school year, why we would start on that far south end.
Okay.
Matt, one more question. Do you send out letters to all the property owners on Sixth Street? Telling about the?
No, there will be a public release that goes out via our Facebook page and everything else, but we do not send letters to every resident on Sixth Street, no.
Okay. Pardon?
Are they going to connect everything? Peters?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Mitch wanted to know.
Couldn't hear you, Mitch.
I was asking Matt if they promised to connect everything in the street.
Yeah. We hope so.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, then I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Merron?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boer?
Yes.
Gressel?
Yes.
Weez?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along, the administrator's report. Jared?
Thank you. So we talked a little bit about this already, the new minutes reporting. We did our second recording last week, and it went out. I felt like it was, it was a really good one. We're still ironing out some of the wrinkles, so when you guys have a chance to view them, by all means, give us your feedback. Let us know what you think we could be doing differently or be doing better. Other than the obvious, probably improve public speaking, starting with yours truly. Redevelopment area number two. This was really good news last week. We received word from Department of Administration that we've been awarded the CDBG Close Grant in the amount of $696,603.58. So at a minimum, that is the amount of money we have to work with on that block. Again, we're going to be using 500,000 of that as the match for the CDBG Public Facilities Grant. That is the competitive grant we will be applying for again this spring. We're still working with our consultant on that to strengthen our application even more. There's a couple of steps we need to either do or redo at the redevelopment authority level, but nothing too major. So we'll be moving forward with that. Obviously, you know, we were anticipating this award, but nonetheless, this was really good news to hear this because, you know, it will be a significant project for the city. The public safety facility update. Robert E. Lee has been working on lining up some contractors for us to meet with, with Robert E. Lee, myself, the chiefs, to sit down with these contractors, look at coming up with more refined designs, as well as looking at what some alternatives might be as far as, for example, a more cost-effective solution in the form of like a prefabricated or pre-engineered building. So that is moving along. Future agenda items. Don't really intend to get into too much of an action discussion here tonight. This is more of an update because there's still a lot of unanswered questions, but filled in a couple of the blanks regarding the lighthouse. So per the conversation we had at the Finance Personnel Meeting on the 15th, I proposed to GSA about removing the catwalk from the lease agreement because the city has no real use for it. And so that would be at least one fewer thing for us to worry about. They, however, said that they would not do that. That we either take it with the catwalk or don't take it at all. They also indicated that we now know what their backup plan is, at least what they're claiming their backup plan is. If we don't execute the lease agreement, that they would proceed at the public sale of it. My understanding was that there would be a lot of limitations from their perspective on that. As a lighthouse, there's only so many entities that could possibly buy it, but they're indicating that that's the route that they would move forward with. So I'm still pursuing as much other information as I can to fill in some more blanks, but, oh, sorry.
So just, just, just to interrupt. So I understand we wanted to buy it, but they refused to sell it to us. And if we don't sign the lease, they're going to sell it to somebody else.
We, important clarification, we never wanted to buy it. When this whole thing started back when our other administrator was here, they sent us a letter and told us that they were getting rid of all the lighthouses along Lake Michigan, and they wanted to know if we were interested in taking ownership of it. And we said we were. And there was paperwork and everything that was filled out. I know John Pabick was pretty involved in it. So it was our understanding that they were just going to give us the lighthouse. Then six months ago, maybe a little bit longer, they came back and threw this lease on Jared's desk and said, "Well, now we want you to lease the lighthouse, and you'll be responsible for any maintenance of the lighthouse and the catwalk." That's where we're running into an issue because we never agreed to buy it. They were going to give it to us. We knew that we would have to maintain the lighthouse as far as painting it and anything like that. The catwalk was never even talked about. They claimed they wanted to maintain the catwalk because the lighthouse was actually a operating lighthouse as far as the lens and things. So this whole thing, I don't know if there were new people that got involved in it, but this whole thing has been thrown up in the air. And Mr. Gressel brought up a good point tonight. If everybody's familiar with the Art Detman fish shanty that's on the historic list and is also kept up, why can't they put the lighthouse on the historic list and then keep it up rather than coming, running it through the city? So that's another avenue that Jared's going to look at. And John, I don't know if you have anything to add to all this that's going on. I know you've been really involved in it from the start.
In reviewing the binder that I turned over to Jared, they did include the catwalk. The catwalk, the Fresnel lens, and the structure itself is three components to ownership transfer.
But somebody spirited away the Fresnel lens?
Yeah. Because that was there when we, when it was there for public inspection. And that was noted as well and included in the photos that are in the, that are in the binder that I turned over to Jared. I thought part of that whole application had to do with declaring it through the Wisconsin State Historical Society as a historic site. And I thought that we had gotten that designation. Is that what you read, Jared?
Yes, that, so my understanding was that it was designated, but I don't know if that, because that was through the state, I don't know if that's any different than what Alderman Gressel is saying. And I don't know what the ramifications of that would be as far as us taking over, or what our responsibility would be with it.
It was, it was actually part of the federal requirement from the Department of Interior, if I'm not mistaken, in transferring that federal asset. You know, the coordination with the State Historical Society. So I'm I'm a little, still a little confused about the offering it for lease because the program that we were applying for never talked about lease. It talked about, you know, quick deed and things like that. You don't get a deed with a lease.
Right. Any other questions on the lighthouse? Otherwise, we'll go back to Jared's report.
Yeah, it'll be back before Finance and Personnel at the council in the future. I just wanted to give what little update I did have. At least we have one of those questions answered about the catwalk.
Have they given you a deadline in their request?
Not really. They've just expressed a great deal of impatience, but they have not given me a hard deadline.
Okay.
Another future agenda item that'll be coming before the council at the April 5th meeting will be a rescue intercept agreement with Green Bay Metro Fire. They approached the city and would like to enter into an agreement. But in order to, you know, kind of follow our proper processes we have here, I'll first be putting it on the PPP agenda, which will be on March 29th, and then that'll go before the council on April 5th. It'll be entering into a rescue intercept agreement with Green Bay Metro. We currently have one with Brown County Rescue. But there are occasions when Brown County Rescue, for whatever reason, is not able to perform that service. And so Green Bay Metro, who steps in in those scenarios, wants to have a separate agreement with us. So that will be.
Can you explain what this is? This is a new thing to me.
So I'll turn it over to the chief to kind of explain what exactly an intercept is. But my basic understanding of it is that essentially you've got like basic life emergency services. They pick someone up, and in order to get them the best care as quickly as possible en route to a hospital, you have a better equipped, advanced EMS, I believe is what it's called, essentially meet them at like a halfway point, so for example, somewhere in Luxembourg, and they transfer the patient.
No.
Oh, they don't? Oh, no, okay. So, okay, here, this is where I'm going to turn over to Tom to explain it better.
Tom, are you in a position to answer this a little bit better? Go ahead, Tom.
Right, and exactly, you know, go on Jared's point there, you know, the majority of the calls, the rescue calls that are made with our service, are paramedic intercepts, excuse me, going to the Green Bay hospitals. And we have the agreement with County Rescue to, you know, provide this service for us, which is an upgrade in care from what our current existing Algoma service has to offer. And we've been doing this for a number of years. And so what Green Bay Fire is looking for, or Green Bay Metro, is an agreement similar to what County Rescue has. And it's just to make sure that they are being compensated for these calls. We need this to take, you know, that next step of care for patients that are above and beyond what our EMS personnel on the scene are capable of providing, so it's a necessary service.
Do we have an agreement with Door County?
And paramedic intercepts on a, I'm going to say, very, very regular, if not daily basis with them. Not, not so much Green Bay Fire, but with County Rescue.
Okay, so just, so, just so I've got a clear understanding, Chief. We put somebody in the Algoma ambulance, and we turn on the red lights, and we drive on 54 toward the Green Bay hospitals. At some point on Highway 54, the ambulance backs up to a Brown County ambulance, and that patient is transferred to a Brown County ambulance.
No.
Is that correct?
Not, no, not quite, Jake. We, typically, we will meet with them somewhere along Highway 54. And typically, what happens is their personnel will come into our ambulance with that next level of care because they're able to administer some medications that our personnel are not able to administer. And their personnel will stay with that patient in our ambulance. One of our personnel typically will transfer from, from our apparatus into theirs. And it will be kind of a tandem as they proceed to whatever hospital that they're going to. And our personnel will, theirs, they will stay in our ambulance and, again, administer the next level of care before they get to the emergency room.
Okay, so it's sort of an advanced triage then, sort of scenario.
In a nutshell, yes, probably right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's, I have a clear understanding of what's going on. Keep that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions on it? Mitch?
I just have a statement. I mean, I don't know if people realize this, but as of the first of the year, Green Bay Metro took over Bellevue. Fire. They are not currently doing rescue. County Rescue still is in Bellevue till next year on January 1st. And then that's going to probably cut County Rescue's volume of calls by probably close to a third. And there there has been discussion and things being said that, I know County is, has reorganized already. They have County Rescue that does the emergency things. And now they have a separate company called Eagle Transports that does Door County to Green Bay, or a nursing home to the hospital in Green Bay. There is a distinct possibility that County Rescue's emergency service could go away. And I think it's pretty important to have Green Bay hooked up. And they're probably doing this with everybody, but it's probably a good thing to make sure we're hooked up with somebody that that service will continue. that that service will continue, no matter what happens with County. It might not happen with County, they may stay exactly like they are. But there's a possibility that they, their emergency part could go away. And this will be very, very necessary, 'cause the only one left after that is DePere. And I don't think they wanna get into regular intercepts. Green Bay actually added a, they made this Station Seven out on the east side. It's a full-time ambulance now. Used to be maybe three days a week, but they are full-time now, so they're, they're adding staffing to take care of Bellevue and hopefully us in the meantime, so I think it's something that, there's no question, we have to do it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, and, and I would kind of reiterate what Mitch's saying, commenting on here too. I said, this is something, we, as a, an EMS responding group, we need to take advantage of this. So we, we wanna, we wanna move forward with this and get this approved, so that we're able to provide, again, that next level of care sooner than, you know, the, the additional time in getting these persons to an emergency room situation.
Real quick question from, in regards to waiting for the PPP meeting. Is there any damage, or is there any hindrances as far as waiting for the April fifth meeting? Is that gonna put us behind the eight ball, or potentially put us into a situation we don't wanna be in? Do we have time, I guess, is the question?
Yeah.
You know what I?
Oh, sorry.
I haven't, I haven't received, you know, the, the request, but I'm gonna put this to Jared, and I, I don't anticipate that there would be any problems, but it's something that we don't want to dwell on and, and let this go for long term. This is something that I think, as a city and the townships that, that we respond to, we wanna get this taken care of. Sooner than later, definitely sooner than later.
Are the, are the terms identical to the one that we have with Brown County?
No.
No, they're, they're slightly, the rates are slightly higher with the Green Bay Metro Fire. They presented us two different options. That's why we, we didn't have, we didn't have time to really turn it around to get it on this agenda. We looked at it. But it's pretty clear one option's better than the other for the city, but nonetheless, I wanted to sit down with the chief and go over it with him before we formally make that recommendation. And so, I wanted to sit down with him prior to the PPP meeting, and then it'll go from there to the council. Scott, to your question about, are there gonna be any sort of issues with waiting until April? No, I, I really, unless what, what Mitch is saying comes to fruition within the next month, which he's shaking his head, and I highly doubt that would happen, that would not be an issue.
And Jake?
Yeah, thank you.
Jake, we do, we do invoice the patient whatever the, whatever County Rescue charges us or Green Bay. They do get invoiced that.
So it's over then, essentially, to their insurance agency or, or provider or whatever?
The, the city does get the bill, but then we pass it on, so, you know, you could get stuck with it, but, and it does happen. We, not too often.
And it's the same with Green Bay Metro. We, we get a, Green Bay Metro regularly invoices the city for these transfers, so it's, yeah, I mean, it, it's something that, you know, we, we wanna move forward with this agreement with, with Green Bay Metro. You know, depending, I know Mitch had mentioned some things where potentially County Rescue may move in a different direction. And, and this is something that, again, we definitely want to come to agreement with, with Green Bay Metro.
I don't think there's any issue on, on the agreement. We, we have an issue going on right now with Metro that basically is billing the individual, and it's quite a bit of money. And we had already billed the individual for the paramedic intercept, and now they're coming back, and they're also billing the individual, so this is, there's, this is more, a little more in-depth than everybody thinks it is. I got Amber and Jared and Aaron working on this issue, because of course, guess who gets the phone call from the patient when all of a sudden he gets this huge bill on a paramedic intercept? So, it's not as simple as everybody thinks it is. We will have a recommendation by the April meeting and by the PP meeting, but we need some clarification with Metro on how we're gonna be billing this, so. I think that's enough said on this issue. I don't wanna get into much detail on this other issue, but if anybody wants to talk to me about it offline, or Amber, or Jared, please feel free to give us a call, so. Jared?
Okay, and then the, the last item is the employee handbook. This was more or less put on the back burner when, you know, we were pretty short-staffed here, but now that we're back up and running at full staff, was able to bring this back up. The league unfortunately is not gonna be able to provide the scope of services that I thought they were gonna be able to, as far as a free review of the draft handbook. And their, their role is more if you have general questions about a, a policy, like one particular policy within the handbook, not the document itself. So with that in mind, I spoke with the labor attorneys, and they, believe it or not, they agreed with this, and their recommendation was to not send it their way yet, if for no other reason, because it would cost a lot of money. Because if they're reviewing the entire document, that's a lot of attorney hours, and that'll add up really quickly. So with that in mind, I'm going back with it, basically with a fine-tooth comb myself, getting it to as good of a place as I'm comfortable with, and then we'll send it to the labor attorneys to review any outstanding policy issues I was not able to get a clear answer on through more cost-effective resources, such as the Wisconsin City Managers Association and, and the league resources that I can utilize myself. So, this is the route that I wanna go, just to help keep costs down, but still end up with an updated and sufficient handbook. So, I just wanna give an update as to where that was at.
Any questions, other than what was in his report to the administrator at this time? From anybody? Okay, hearing done. Item fourteen, there are no appointments this evening, but there is a comment that I need to make, since we're getting phone calls. The Algoma Chamber has decided not to have the annual garage sale in the city of Algoma. I think that was always in June, wasn't it?
Right after the fourth.
Right after the fourth, and because of certain cost restraints and stuff with the chamber, and not being able to have their fundraisers like Shanty Days and things like that, the chamber board has decided not to have it. We've been getting phone calls here at City Hall from people asking if the city is going to basically coordinate a garage sale. And our answer has been no. It's a chamber event, it was never a city event. There is some cost involved. I did have a call from someone asking me if a certain date could be set. I think that's up to the individuals that do the garage sales. If you wanna try to coordinate something on your own, you're always welcome to put it out on the website, on Facebook, at, at, we would actually post it for you on the website, but the city will not coordinate that. That'll have to come from an individual in the city that would like to basically do a garage sale. And I understand what they're saying, is if it's on a certain date, you kind of get all the families working together, but again, I just wanna reiterate that, that was a chamber event. It was not the city's event, so if you have any questions, please reach out to the new chamber executive director, so. That's all I got at this time. Next meeting date, of course, is April fifth. Are there any items for the next meeting that would you'd like on the agenda at this time? If not, please reach out to Aaron or Jared to make sure that you request your items for the next agenda. And again, I do wanna thank all the managers for the good job they're doing on, on reviewing their minutes, and it's, it's more than just reading your minutes, it's talking about what's going on, and, and I think they're doing a good job, so. Hats off to them, and for those of you that are not aware of it, talk to your neighbors, and if you've got cable, if you don't, you can go out on YouTube, and you can also watch it, so. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, second by Mitch. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting's adjourned.